Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for coming on this very rainy Thursday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Sit for planning board and select one hearing room here at Town Hall. We all got stuff about we love everybody, and it's all here on Zoom. You're supposed to be generous, there's seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, six thirty, continue public hearing. Special permit in the Hamar Rock Village Residential Overlay District. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the special permit for the Southern River Arena Development in Hamar Rock Village Residential Overlay District, twenty-one Central Avenue and seven Marshville Avenue for applicants at Southern River Arena Realty LLC and Union Street Realty LLC until July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. And continue the time for action until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. You second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'll just give a update.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. So, the E M F goes by with the site visit is this way coming out. Well, Jen and I, Jen and I are saying I'm going to the site visit. Okay, so, just letting you know that it is in the works. It is in the works. Okay. And I gave Mr. Brodsky a particular timeline when he had to file to meet the four weeks for next time. Okay, so. You'll see how that works. So, we can go on to a zero countryway? Um, we've stored it, oh, let's call it six thirty-five. Six thirty-five, I should, is anybody up covering the storm? Let's see. Is it you just do the suggestion right?
I think so, yeah.
Are you all certain?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the record, Gregory Morris, first student here, Morse Engineering, referring to property owner Gregory Crone. This is a continued public hearing for a stormwater permit on Countryway. Mr. Crone has proposed that he construct a single-family home at a vacant lot. It's a fifty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-one square foot lot. At the last meeting, I generally outlined the plans for you. You can see the location of the proposed home in the back with a gravel driveway down to Countryway. The planning board had hired Merrill engineers to do a stormwater peer review. Since the last meeting, we've updated the plans to satisfy Merrill's comments as well as taking into consideration some of the comments we received during the hearing. The revised plans, the notable changes. We moved the septic system an additional eight point seven feet further away from the down gradient property line from the water. That allowed us to add a sway of additional spot grades between that down gradient to water, which is the Dunbar Lawless property, to ensure that water wasn't being directed toward them but was retained on the site. We added a label to the property line between the driveway and the Dunbar Lawless property. Again, there was question on whether it was eight feet or ten feet. We added a ten-foot label, so while there is no setback to a driveway, we're proposing a driveway at ten-foot setback to the lot line. Third, we super elevated the driveway. As I previously stated, it's a gravel driveway through Countryway back to the house. Super elevating it means that we're pitching the driveway to one side. In this case here, we're pitching it to the northwest side toward the north situat- side of the project. It gets trapped within the infiltration basin at the front of the site where it feeds trees. Previously, per Merrill's comments, we had added tree protection. We had added additional freeboard to the rain garden and an additional sway at the edge of the property line. Their latest correspondence dated May sixteenth, I think, suggests that all of their comments are addressed. They had one recommendation that a swift application be submitted to the EPA because we're disturbing more than an acre. That's not just a recommendation, that's a requirement, something we'd have to do, so we would concur to that recommendation. All over you.
Okay. So, yeah, the site plan was revised and there is now more room in between the the neighbor's property and septic system. There's a swell, it's kind of like a burdenous swell with spot grades, so it would be pretty hard for a contractor to mess it up. So, we asked for a lot of spot grades, so it could be constructed per the intent of the plan. Greg, can I ask you what the cones are doing out there?
Cones?
Yeah. I don't buy these very well, Mr. Crone.
Yeah, I think the cones aren't on this property.
Okay.
The cones are, from what I can tell driving by, along this lot line.
Okay, I know, just one little bit.
Yeah.
I think you got across the, okay, just wondering. Did you go by anywhere anyway?
Today, not today, unfortunately.
I think one of the things that we're gonna have to look for during construction is there may need to be sediment subs, et cetera, installed to keep water on the property during construction. And so, you know, it may need to come to that. Not just the rain, not a rain garden, but, you know, periodic sediment subs to keep the water from going out into the street and from going out into other properties. But the written volume of runoff has not been increased from the existing conditions.
So, the sway that you added was to the side of the?
If you're looking at the plan here, it's to the left side of the septic system between the driveway.
One foot deep, so then, I think.
That's about right.
And what's the, what's the bridge along, who cares? Oh, erosion, so that's where it still touched it, correct?
No, it sounds like they're just talking about asking for some.
Mark?
No.
I know I asked a question the last time, there's no way that that septic system would diagonal.
There really isn't, because what we're trying to do is we're trying to keep it parallel to the contours. You don't want to go diagonal to the contours. We did move it almost nine feet further.
But, you know, it's just, that was my whole concern.
I actually, how do we address the sediment?
I think I have a condition in there that if they need additional erosion control, that that they have to, they have to provide it, but, you know.
You'll identify that in the field whilst under construction.
Right, but I think we say any ten, I, maybe I didn't, I don't remember, you know, in most, in a lot of them, we say, you know, if you have to add stuff during construction or prior to a storm event, you have to add stuff.
Right.
Are you saying you are, right?
I know, I, I know I'm doing this stuff.
Is there anything for the public?
I have some questions.
If you could just take your bean out of this place.
The Swander seven four seven Countryway, I have two questions. One, just one, because I know the last meeting, Mr. Crone said that the driveway was as far as it could be because of distance to our septic on our property, but it just seemed like they moved it closer away from the Mars property line. Are we still in accordance with the distance from our septic?
Your septic.
Right, because I think the way I understood last time, you were explaining the driveway had to be radius last, yeah.
Last time, I think the setback we were talking about with septic systems was the setback to the drainage base. So, the stormwater drainage basin has a setback to your septic system. That location has not changed. So, the driveway in this case, you know, is in excess of fifty feet from your septic system, it's not anywhere close to it.
Okay, so that was a little bit long. And then last thing, we talked about the sequence of construction because of the lot being landlocked and only access to our property. And I think I must come back to the speeding with the plan of how the sequence of construction will go so that they could be in access to the lot. Please.
What do we have to say?
Sure, so I mean, step one is to install the erosion controls at the site, which includes a stabilized construction entrance. The site has to be accessed over the frontage of this property, it doesn't have rates, otherwise, so.
Do you know what a stabilized entrance looks like? Do you need to know what that looks like?
Yeah, I have it.
Greg, can you tell them what that's called, please?
So, a stabilized construction entrance is made out of crushed stone. We're proposing it right here off of Countryway, which is the location of the finished driveway. And the dimensions of that is twenty feet wide by thirty feet long, crushed stone coming in on Countryway at that location, so.
And tell them what that's used for.
Yeah, so that, that's used for all, all access to the site.
Well, why do we have this? The stuff does not come onto the site, right?
Correct.
That's why they want to be assured.
Yeah. And then just out of curiosity, that is, you have to take down that builtstone wall on those trees to be able to do that first, right?
That's, that's correct. You remove that portion of wall and trees that are in the way to construct that entrance.
So, I don't really know if the word is, remember is that this will be subject of fifty-foot frontage special permit. And so, I went back and looked at the fifty-foot frontage special permit. And quite unfortunately, it does say that they can have access over your lot now until there's occupancy of a second home.
Okay, it's, uh, within reason, it says we have to be, we have to come to a reasonable agreement.
So, I just put a condition in here that the existing gravel road and dirt driveway shall discontinue on the lot per this C B A decision recorded at local page.
The one that.
It goes across.
Right.
Yes, right.
But you were aware that there was a special permit for that, correct?
For the one going from seven four seven to zero right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To create the, to create the second lot, there was a C B A decision.
Yes, and it says the law will work with reasonable agreement. There's a gentleman that says, like, we will come to reasonable agreement for access to the property as well. I can pull, so I'm aware that there was that, but the wording seems like we would need communication for a reasonable agreement. So, I think that's just why the conversation hasn't happened and we wanted to make sure the conversation worked.
Well, yeah, we've got zoning, so, uh, can we?
I don't know that zoning can ban access of the private property, they can say, work it out.
Yeah. Greg, you go ahead.
We can certainly.
This project?
No, it doesn't need to go back to zoning.
It doesn't, okay. It should go back to zoning. Have a conversation.
No, so I think, I think the applicant needs to have a conversation with the neighbors to discuss whether that access is going to be needed or not. I think it's perfectly feasible, or it is feasible, to construct that access without using that property whatsoever. But if for whatever reason a contractor would ever want to, then yeah, we absolutely have to be discussed with them. But to construct the construction entrance is a relatively small job, but easily done.
The question I would have then is, in my pedal to the shoes, just the driveway at this point, once you get your point erosion, whatever, is the owner of the property, not the owner of the property, sort of repair that mess?
The owner of that property with the mud puddle business.
I know, I know, but it was, but it was the person who owned it to begin with.
So, they would have to, they would have to discuss before any work happens. I would like to think that Mr. Crone would believe that, but he has no ability to do that until they say so. So, they need, they need to talk as neighbors to correct that situation.
We wouldn't pay to correct the situation that he did to us. Of course, we would be willing to talk to him if he wants to fix the mud puddle at the bottom of that property. But, you know, yeah.
In order to, we assume it'll be a matter of time, I would hope so.
I would like to think so, which is probably not a big job, but it's something that we can't unfortunately force him to do work on someone else's private property.
Now, let me ask you this. You're taking out stones. Would it be convenient to move them over in front of the mud puddle?
Front of the car.
The mud puddle?
The mud puddle, you know, in other words, extend the stone. That's working on somebody else's, you know, Greg, their property.
Their property.
Then that would be a conversation.
Yeah, there's, there's a wall across the entire frontage of this lot. It's on the property, it's not in the driveway.
I know, we had that discussion.
You know, those stones, you could relocate them, but they're impacting someone else's, we don't have the rights to allow them.
I understand they're impacting these people, but the thing is, it precludes now a road. I can let Roland go ask him at night, okay. But they can't ultimately have, they can't ultimately have it. I mean, they can, they can have this one new driveway, and then seven forty-seven has to access over the existing easement that they already have. That's down the road. That's down the road. What I'm saying is extend. And then they have to discontinue the gravel driveway. And it would just make sense visually to take those stones and continue them to the property line of their property. Do you?
I do, but that, it sounds like it's fine, like, that's a good conversation.
Yeah.
It's not, that's something we need to talk about. I agree, and I didn't talk about breaking down between people and historic stone walls, but that's not great.
Okay, so we've got to leave it up that you're gonna have a conversation with your neighbor, and you're gonna come to some kind of reasonable agreement, which we don't have any control over, so good manners and nice neighbors, right? What is it, all fences been created, unnecessary, we're still.
Stone wall.
That might not be it, so, make a board of fence, I'll just say. We just don't want, yes, we're not our FedEx or whoever. We can't be just in the zone anymore, okay, yes, sir.
Let's just say, Michael Swander, seven forty-seven, to be clear, we don't use that easement to access our property. I can talk to landscapers, I can call garbage people if they're using it. That road reexists us buying that property.
I know that, well aware, well aware. I just want to protect you, that's all. So, we're gonna have a nice conversation before we, and we'll be able to resolve that. Anybody else have anything to say? Yes, sir.
Phil Dunbar, seven twenty-three Countryway. So, just a clarification, Greg, so you're moving the driveway a couple of feet to the northwest, et cetera, et cetera.
So, we had always proposed the driveway at ten feet from your lot line. We added a label to that to identify it specifically on plan that it's ten feet from the lot line. We didn't move it.
Okay.
Just now.
It's just labeled clearly instead of putting a scale on the plan.
Also, just want to thank the board for coming and helping.
They're gonna help us, true.
They're so good for the town.
That's why they're good.
That's why it's the big bucks.
So much. Are we all set then? Don't like to be here. Has anybody online? Is there anybody on the line?
There isn't. Okay, that's for this agenda.
Not for this agenda, okay, it is your line. Okay, here we go. I move to approve the stormwater permit with the site plan and septic design plan for Zero Countryway, a septic map block, block twelve dash three dash ninety, dated four one, ten, twenty twenty-five. With provisions through five sixteen, twenty twenty-five, consisting of three sheets and a stormwater report. Calculations stated April two, twenty twenty-five, with revisions through May six, twenty twenty-five, prepared by Martin Engineering Company, and the conditions noted below. One, construction shall comply with the site and septic design plan for Zero Countryway, a septic map block, block twelve dash three dash ninety, situated date four one, twenty twenty-five, with revisions through five sixteen, twenty twenty-five, consisting of three sheets and stormwater report and calculations stated April second, twenty twenty-five, with revisions through May six, twenty twenty-five, by Paul G. Gunn, he of Morse Engineering Company. And the operation and maintenance plans for construction and post-construction for Zero Countryway, situated mass dated March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, except as they may be modified to conform to the conditions below. Any or all owners of the property at site contracts for ratings, site work, and installation of utilities, house development, foundations, and or driveways shall be advised of this approval and these conditions. A copy of the approval plan and conditions shall be kept on the site at all times during construction. Two, any plan changes or changes from the proposed materials shall be submitted to the planning office to determine if the changes are insignificant or require a special, or require a permit qualification approved by the town planner. The stormwater management system, including grass infiltration depression with fresh stone, rain garden, underground infiltration system, grass swales, grading, dwelling, and site amenity locations shall not be changed or expanded without prior written approval of the issuing authority. Expansion include additional pavement areas, failure to obtain written approvals is a violation of the town constituent general bylaw and subject to fines. Three, copies of this approval and the group stormwater permit plan and condition shall be provided to subsequent owners who shall be advised of the needs of periodic maintenance of the stormwater system and the need to retain the grading of the lot as approved. Prior to the transfer of property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning office an inspection report certified by a professional engineer showing compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. Planning office must receive written notification at least one week prior to any change in the ownership of the property occurring during construction. Four, with this stormwater permit revised approval permitting or licensing from any local state or federal agency, such permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the stormwater permit. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to commencement of construction. This includes if this permit is applicable, if this permit is needed, it shall be provided to the planning office two weeks prior to construction commencement to verify it is consistent with the stormwater permit. Five, the applicant shall consent to allow members and town officials from the planning board and other persons acting under the planning board or its agenda agents to enter upon any lands and carry out such inspections that may deem may be deemed necessary. The applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their effort to verify the layout, design, and construction work for the stormwater permit and are satisfactory to the form to town specifications and requirements of the board. Six, this stormwater permit must be reported at the registry of deeds with proof furnished to the planning office prior to construction. Failure to report the stormwater permit is a violation of the permit and subject to fines included in the town constituent general bylaws. Seven, the infiltration drivels shall be installed to count the water elevation a minimum of two feet above seasonal high groundwater elevations. Stormwater during construction as well as after construction is not allowed to increase in rate or volume to adjacent properties, the street, or off-site. They come apart. No, no sediment, including salty water, is allowed to leave the site during construction. And no clearing beyond the limit of work, limit of clearing slash erosion for line is shown on the plan is allowed. The limit of clearing shall be staked in the field prior to construction commencing construction commencing and shall be maintained throughout the construction phase. Now, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M. on weekdays and eight A M. on Saturdays and shall cease no later than seven P M. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and or federal holidays. Construction work includes any operational machinery and idle vehicles. No truck idle on the site or adjacent streets is allowed. Ten, the sequence of construction shall be submitted to the planning office prior to the pre-construction process. The establishment of the driveway location with the construction entrance shall be first item constructed with all construction prep on the property. Eleven, any temporary construction measures with sediment control traps and swales must be installed in initial stages of construction prior to any foundation construction. All underground recharge chambers and infiltration areas must be fenced off during construction to prevent overcompaction of soils and minimize construction traffic over the recharge areas. Twelve, there shall be no floating subsurface systems until the tributary area is stabilized. Thirteen, the grass infiltration depression with fresh stone, rain garden, underground infiltration drivels, and grass swales must be retained and maintained as designed as they are components of the stormwater management system. Maintenance must, maintenance must be further approved both construction, operation, and maintenance plan. Fourteen, snow is not allowed to be stored in any infiltration area or in any component of the stormwater system. Fifteen, a stabilized construction entrance per the plan details shall be installed prior to any work on the site and shall be maintained as often as necessary throughout construction to prevent migration of mud and sediment off-site. Sixteen, prior to any land disturbance, erosion controls shall be installed and inspected by the town planner or approved agents. At this time, the site is also to be staked to show the house and drainage movements. All stockpiles shall be surrounded by an erosion control barrier. Additional erosion controls such as silo fence, silo talk, and or hay bays placed prior to a precipitation event may be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road or adjacent properties during construction. All erosion control shall be installed per the plan and shall be maintained in good working condition throughout construction. The applicant is responsible for maintaining and managing stormwater on-site throughout the construction period and during the transition to fully functional operations and maintenance. Construction approval in no way relieves the applicant from its obligation to ensure a stormwater does not impact the other properties, and the applicant shall take all necessary steps to prevent such problems. Seventeen, town planner shall be notified when installation of a construction entrance and erosion control is completed. If any permit inspection is being requested, this notification shall occur forty-eight hours in advance of inspection. Eighteen, no on-street parking or loading or unloading of construction equipment or vehicles shall be permitted during construction unless police detail is provided, informed, as determined by police department. Noise mitigation and proper dust control shall be used. Nineteen, all disturbed areas associated with this stormwater permit shall be mowed and seeded with six inches of screen plenty long unless other site condition is specified. Details of the rain garden and grass infiltration basin shall be changed from four inches to six inches of long prior to application for building permit and submitted to the planning office. A bill of late shall be provided to planning office to show that the home is clean. Twenty, the crushed stone driveway cannot be converted to a paved driveway without another public hearing and additional mitigation. Twenty-one, the existing gravel road and dirt driveway shall be discontinued on the lot and adjacent lot per the C B A decision reported in Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, or five eighty-four, five six, page three oh nine. Twenty-two, the operation and maintenance plan during construction shall be followed as written. Twenty-three, a pre-construction conference will be required on-site to verify the contractor is aware of the stormwater permit conditions and required inspections. Reporting of the permit must occur prior to pre-construction conference with proof of reporting approached to the planning office. Twenty-four, construction inspections will be provided as follows. A, all inspections for the town shall be performed by the town planner or a designated representative of the planning department or planning board and by the board design engineer. All inspections shall be documented with written reports that describe the lines of the approved plan and supporting application documents and construction specifications. Any variations shall be noted. B, the town planner and the board design engineering are must be notified forty-eight. B, the town planner and the board design engineering must be notified forty-eight hours prior to one, installation of construction entrance and erosion control and staking of corners of dwelling, limited work, driveway and drainage improvements. Two, installation of facilitation sumps, including directional swells if required to manage stormwater during construction. Three, bottom of the infiltration basin, rain garden, cooling driveways, infiltration chambers, prior to backfilling. Four, installation of infiltration chambers. Five, rough grading of site includes swales, site and driveway verified grades as are are as designed including slope and driveway grading with super elevated depth. Six, finished grading of the grass infiltration depression, rain garden and all stormwater management system with the elevation submitted to the town planner and design engineer for verification. Seven, inspection of the site amenities include house, driveway and mowed and seeded areas. Eight, inspection of final completion of site work including cleanup to determine compliance with the conditions prior to certification of compliance, C O C. All grass must be growing and landscaping completed. Work shall be subject to removal if necessary inspections are not requested. If the property is sold prior to completion of the work, the planning board reserves the right to inform the buyer that the stormwater management system is incomplete. Spot grades shall be performed carrying rough grading and finished grading to ensure any swales were graded and no standing one will be present. Twenty-five, the applicant will provide a construction and plan completion guarantee of five thousand dollars prior to issuance of a building permit to guarantee that the town will be notified when site inspections are required. The asphalt plan will be provided and construction will be completed in accordance with the approved plan and grass will be growing. A certificate of completion must be issued prior to return of the construction and plan completion down B. Twenty-six, the property owner shall be responsible for the proper maintenance and operation of the stormwater management system, best management practices, inspection, stand on a maintenance checklist and plan is attached and shall serve as a guide for the proper maintenance of the system which is required perpetually. Twenty-seven, the destruction of the proposed stormwater management system, site utilities, site amenities and grading shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer who shall certify to the planning board that the site was constructed according to the approved plans. The certification shall be accomplished by a master plan, stand by a registered surveyor and a registered professional engineer who designed the system and shall be submitted to the planning office within ten days of completion of work. This plan shall improve the construction additions of the stormwater management system including top and bottom elevations and in works, spot grades as necessary, rating of house, site amenities and driveways. Prior to application for a certificate of occupancy and interim asphalt must be submitted to the planning office for verification, the stormwater management system and grading will follow the design. The final asphalt plan must be submitted prior to obtaining a certificate of completion for the stormwater permit and all work must be found in compliance with approved permit. All grading and landscaping must be completed prior to the final asphalt supplemental. If the drainage system is not performing as designed and conditioned or stormwater is observed coming but flooding properties of a street, the stormwater authority can request necessary mitigation remedy the situation at the applicant's expense. This condition applies to all construction activities that provide issuance of certificate of completion. Twenty-nine, underground irrigation systems are prohibited from connecting to the town's water distribution system or in any manner using this water. All irrigation systems installed must be supplied by on-site sources at the expense of the property owner. Violations of this policy shall result in applying to the property owner with equal fine loving on the installer of the system. Thirty, any conditions contained herein that varies from the plan supersede the plan great difference. Second discussion. Discussions?
Just a couple of quick things, number three, old section there. Let me actually, it says, occurring during construction. Is this limited to just construction or is this perpetual? In terms of changing portion?
We're particularly more concerned about the dirt construction because if the actual changes during construction, we need to know afterwards that we ask for documentation that the property is changing and hopefully, you know, the owners are responsible. They sell, you know, make sure everything's in proper working order.
So the compliance, it includes the compliance with the operations. But just during construction?
Well, during, right, I mean, but during afterwards, you know, I don't, I thought I said that.
Well, this is just saying you want written notification, change of ownership during construction.
But prior to the transfer of the property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning office inspection report. So that would be, that could, that is
That's your
That's my, that's We've had some problems change hands in construction that we didn't know about and it tends to be a problem.
Yeah, no, it seemed like some notification, change hands. So did we go down? Number ten. Establishment, why do you pay attention? Construction, it should be the first item constructed to keep to keep access, right, to all construction traffic. Not really trying to keep traffic. I mean, all the property is, it's really about all of the access moving through that construction entrance, they want that first.
Alright, so you wanted to say she'll be, she'll be the first item constructed to keep access for all traffic on the property.
Yes. Things worth, nineteen. I think last time that she Twenty-four, the three little eyes there. Yeah. Cultic?
Yeah, what's that?
I don't recognize the term, but I just heard it's
Um, it's
Cultic, should be, should be C U L T E C.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be
It's a manufacturer.
It's manufactured.
Oh, so it should be
I'll capitalize it, okay.
This is a new term, I was interested.
I have a question, number two, I'll need the issue authority.
Yeah.
Okay. Without the written approval, the issue authority, okay. We can put that discussed.
I mean, sometimes it's, I don't, with the planning board and planning board, sometimes it's
Second is a mention?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Careful.
And the state earth is still well? We'll wait, we'll wait, we could do stuff, we could do some minutes and that and stuff.
Meeting minutes. Move to through plan point minutes May eighth, twenty twenty-five.
The second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five. Move to through plan point minutes of April tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We'll amend it.
April twenty-fourth.
April, oh, it says No, I believe what you read, let me just. Alright, so we'll amend the
All we need to do is, okay. Move to approve amended minutes of April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. That's our All in favor?
Aye.
Now we want bills.
I'm sure we should
We always do. Alright, I have a more interesting here, okay. I move to purchase order twenty-five, ten, four oh seven in the amount of nine hundred dollars for peer review, technical support, design review and hearing attendance for the major site plan administrator review and stormwater permit at three fifty-eight to three sixty in a row. Purchase order twenty-five, ten, four oh nine in the amount of one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars for peer review services related to stormwater permit and ten carriage house sway. Purchase order twenty-five, ten, four thirty-one in the amount of seven hundred and eighty dollars for peer review services related to stormwater permit and zero kind of way. And purchase order twenty-five, one oh four twenty-nine in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents for legal notices related to public hearing, seven ninety-nine and eight oh three hundred and twenty. The second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question about is a mega house going up on past thirty-three, be the employer, absolutely huge. Do they like to commit this stormwater? Do you have more about it?
No, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. I know that there's a huge house going up, but no, they didn't commit for stormwater permit. I mean, I believe them.
I don't enjoy your house. It's bigger than thirty-three.
No, it didn't. It didn't commit to our
And there's no, there is no sewer on Beva Dam unless you do a rat-tile, is that correct?
Some of the houses in that area have spaghetti lines. That one serviced by a spaghetti line, it was kept under twenty-five percent increase in impervious. While it's a much bigger house, there's a lot of impervious already on that lot.
I'm against those.
I agree.
How many square feet? At least four? It's got a joint from your kids. I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I don't always get all the permits I'm supposed to sign off on, but, you know.
And then that comes down on Maple Street, well, it's fungus.
That is a different situation.
Some of the different situations.
Yeah, I, I, I really had to speak him up this house.
It just seems to go up forever.
Yes.
What?
What?
The color goes to Always criticizing, we are like
Okay, I'm all set, who's next?
Did anybody in the
Okay, I have a couple of things. We spent some back and forth with Toby, the fellows, not the written, about mortar kind of like it is to be split rock. They're going before the selectmen choose tonight to have no parking signs while a certain distance onward and
On the east side of Morton Highland and that's going to be also signed as fifteen minute loading.
Right, but also the other side as well.
The other side is already
And then I went to at the, the old here forty-four at Ole Miss. With a couple of, of selectmen and the drone. And one gentleman was there about the new car, apparently the next door neighbor, and he wants it to be leveled to turn into a hall parking. All of it. And then basically he was told, too much impervious to it. There's always somebody moving from one parking. And then I think there is plenty of parking. People just don't ever walk.
I don't really count.
But that's why you have to have spots. Yeah?
Some people can't
Or they don't
Right.
It's not our, sometimes you have to stop in your house. Sometimes there's weather out like this.
Yeah. Then you stay home.
Like we did.
Yeah, that's why we're here. What else?
I'm sure he could have paid more money.
CPC wasn't much going on there, there's only three vacancies. But Joey McDonough came in for money for booking minutes from the board selectmen through a certain date. And the fact of the matter is, we can't, they can't, it really
Oh, they want to put like in a book?
Yeah, they put them.
Yeah.
And because it's not historical, twenty seventeen is not historic, but
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So they will be into that to see if that's what our goal.
Just that, yeah, all that for being able to digitize stuff, right? Just, as a librarian, I can tell you it is easy as can be and they just don't argue.
Well, it was Chappell Adventure. And now I remember library won thirty-five thousand dollars to microfiche things, I never even and that's what they could, people didn't want, they could understand thirty-five thousand, but not three point five million. So, there you go. So that's all I know.
Karen, what do you want to say, does anybody else?
I missed affordable, what, yeah, House of Trust last night. Supposedly there wasn't not much going on. I do know that the selectmen had put together for random to come up with some type of proposal to them, both gates, all these, which we could school. And building A and gym need to have their own water, electricity, et cetera, et cetera. And Nancy Poulson, we have almost a half a million dollars to assign for that, a very thing. So, maybe get that.
Well, I'm sorry to say that tonight is some kind of public forum which Mr. Pritchett should be at after a very important reelection.
Right.
Which is being held in the bits, we are for the that center, we are to see, so we will see what comes out of that, I don't, they had some kind of a fair review on that as well in the session. We could swim our way almost right back to
So what is it? So can it's
We had a late nine, it's too late and we have to go. And we also, anybody on the TV, when we have an alternate position, uh, my friend Matt is unable to continue with us, but always have a place to take if you want to come back and join us, absolutely. We need some public input, that's how we operate here. Karen, maybe can, can you work on something?
Um, we remain, we remain very busy, you know, we're, we have a lot of inquiries into A D U's. Uh, we have a lot of, we have A D U's being filed. Uh, we have a lot of projects, you know, been promised several new projects. Um, and so we just wait to see when they come in and, you know, you know, take them one hour at a time. Uh, I have been told that the town is applying for another mass works grant for North City, for, for the construction of the sewer for North City. These mass works grants applications are rather complicated. These Mass Works grants applications are rather complicated. So they ask information that it isn't always, in my opinion, determinable at this, at this stage of a project. Uh, but, you know, we applied for, the town applied for one, two years ago, for Green Bush, and didn't get it. For, for Green Bush, and so, but, finding again, I mean, maybe the fact that we have NBT compliance and, um, where Housing Choice Community will, you know, help spur things along, I of course provide a list of projects that have been approved during the process for, for the application as well. You know, it's this, you know, we, we're, we're very busy with stormwater permits, I mean, there's lots of stormwater permits, we're just seeing this, I've issued them, but we are very, very busy with them. People, um, people aren't so kind about, if you ask for an extension, give an extension, because of course everybody's trying to get things done for, to get their building per, for the building code changes at the end of June. Also, uh, but their lack of planning is not our emergency, so.
How was the building code changing?
They're going to the tenth edition.
Please affect these for one.
It's not affecting stormwater, but it's affecting, um, others, other things that will, you know, according to what people tell me, it's gonna increase the cost of a building, but, you know, so stormwater, they don't find out till they apply for a building permit that they need stormwater, and then of course we're holding them up, uh, uh, but we're not, you know, um, but I don't know, I'll, I don't care to know all the changes in the building code, but people say.
No, I, I get it, it's, it's a follow on permit that they need, so.
Right, it's, right, so, you know, um, so that of course they can't have their building permit until they have all their permits. But, you know.
It, it could be, uh, inform everybody again, the application for the ADU has been amended, correct?
We updated the application for the ADU just to, to make it crystal clear that it's, your measurements for the ADU are to the interior of the exterior wall. We're asking for a canned drawing to go along with that, we're also asking for a canned drawing to document the square footage of the primary dwelling as well. Alright, so we changed that on the application, we put the new application online, just, just in the interest of clarity for, for.
Yeah. I mean, it's too confusing.
Right. So, that, that's where we are, we're, we're, we're very busy, um, et cetera.
Do we have anything coming out of the fact that we should be older?
Um.
Okay, so we don't know about.
Not, not.
How's the water treatment thing coming along, they're going gangbusters down?
They're going gangbusters down there, um, you know, I did give them permission to work on Juneteenth. Um, I don't know, I haven't been called for any, you know, um, basically our next planning's next spec shit is when a lot of the infiltration systems. So I actually haven't even seen, um, that they've finished, supposedly they finished the back slope where the basin's gonna be, they did the wetland replication, um, and so they were, they were moving up the hill. I haven't gotten out to see that, I'll have to request, I'll have to do a site inspection.
Some kind of sense, I could undercut there.
Are you?
Did you see how it's working today?
See how it's running? Um, I did drive by today and did send them an email to say that I think your, your construction entrance needs to be fixed up. I, I mean, those, those filthy waters going offsite, um, there, but, you know, there was potential. Um, I did drive around town today with the conservation agent and we did stop and yell at the window to one guy that can't be putting mud in the road, um, and I don't think he's too pleased with us, but, um, you know.
Has any noise been made, I've seen a basement of woodland? Yeah.
That's conservation.
It is conservation.
Yes, it's not us.
Alright, are there any noise going?
Oh, yeah.
Cause they're, they play our trees.
Well, I think they got a permit.
And, and, and part of that problem, which I'm interested in, is the, um, part of the tenants that would give it to us for the safety complex.
Right.
And I can't seem to figure out where that begins and ends on the back, upriver approach. So I don't know, ten percent of that belongs to conservation. I'm taking a point with the conservation agents.
Yeah, I.
I'm taking a lot of credit.
I mean, I think, you know, I, I think these, the ones on Woodland Road is my understanding, it's the ones that were sold at auction.
Yeah.
And that's what's being developed. We never should have sold all those town pieces at auction. Because they were wet.
Yeah, wet, wet, wet. Well, they're on the railroad track, I don't know, but I can really, I can't, it's like, it's not like my idea is quite the railroad track.
Yeah, I don't know how to strip the food.
So, but, you know.
I was driving to get through the front.
Yeah. In the bridge.
So, I, I think it's conservation, it's not us yet.
I'm just wondering.
I mean, since Pier Forty Four is a public meeting, so we can probably start that.
Okay, does anyone want to comment for that?
Okay.
That's the way it's all done.
Okay. I think we should ask for what's changed, et cetera.
I don't have it, okay.
You didn't put them in the folders?
I have a single, a dual folder.
Just.
It's a, it's a continuation.
We should just read edits.
No, no, we're, we're talking about Pier Forty Four first. That one was just done, I just finished that today, I'm not sending that out to you.
Look, we don't need, it's a continued meeting, if that's something.
Okay, we agree, okay, so, um, we're going to go continue public meeting at the Pier Forty Four Park, site plan administrative review by a public municipal park at Forty Four Jericho Road. I do see that, well, Ms. Miles is here, uh, I come here tonight. Is she there, Alice?
I don't know, she's hanging in there.
Okay. You all set?
Yep, all set, um.
Would you like to tell us what's changed since the last time we spoke?
Sure, the last time we spoke, uh, we had not received our, uh, stormwater permit or orders of conditions. Um, we have now received those, we had, um, our stormwater management plan was peer reviewed, um, and we made some modifications to, um, uh, to that stormwater management plan, and we also made some modifications to the site plan to reflect, um, a couple of updates to the stormwater. And, um, that's, that's it, no major de- design changes, uh, there haven't been any, um, you know, changes to the boardwalk or the landscaping or the shade structure or anything like that, those, those elements are still the same.
Okay, Karen?
Um, so, yeah, the conservation, uh, commission completed the stormwater review, which we were waiting for the last time, they, they issued the stormwater permit because it, they needed to go some intent, so, um, you know, the planning board, if they feel ready, they can, I wrote a draft decision, um, for, for the, uh, for approval of this, I, I only finished it today because I've been swamped with all the other decisions.
You don't need to explain.
So, um, if you feel ready, then everybody should have a hard copy.
This is our first time saving this in black.
Right, this is your first time saving.
Are we ready?
Yeah, we're getting ready.
Okay, here we go. I move to make, this has to do with Pier Forty Four Park and Forty Four Jericho Road. One, the applicant, I move to make a follow up on this, that. The applicant submitted a site plan entitled Citu with Pier Forty Four R, Forty Four Jericho Road, Citu with Mass, Planning Board Set Two Twelve Twenty Twenty Five with revisions through four fifteen twenty twenty five by Cockley Wolf, stamped by Ryan Andrew De Pont, Registered Professional Civil Engineer. Two, Town Meeting voted to provide Community Preservation Committee, CPC funds for three hundred thousand dollars for design and engineering of the Pier Forty Four Park on April tenth, twenty twenty three, under Article Twelve, Item A. Three, the property currently has a community building with utilities and paved parking lot of the property. Site is located in the residential R three, residential zoning district and in floodplain and watershed protection district. Four, a shade structure is proposed, it will have a metal roof with stained vertical cedar, screen slats and timber posts. It will be no taller than sixteen feet to its tallest point measured from the boardwalk and also meets the required front and side setbacks for the residence district. Five, the property of, of Jericho Road is single family residence to the south and west. The Citu with Tavern Restaurant is also located to the west. The north is a private arena and beyond that, the town has to treat Jericho Road program and Park Accord. To the east is Citu with Park, the proposed municipal park adds open space by the harbor as, it's a compatible use and surrounding area, trees will be planted to the north, west and south, some screening and bumper adjacent properties. The board aligns that adjoining, adjoining premises will be protected against any detrimental or authentic uses of the site and the site plan meets the standard overview of Citu with Zone by Law, Section Seven Seven Point Six, power permitting. Six, the number of parking spaces produced for the municipal park is not specifically regulated by the table of minimum requirements, Section Seven Sixty Point Six of Citu with Zone by Law, but is included in all other uses in this table, subject to determination of the planning board. The planning board determined that thirteen parking spaces, including one handicap accessible space, is sufficient for the site. Site parking spaces meet zoning at nine feet wide and eighteen feet long. Seven parallel parking spaces will also be provided in Jericho Road to serve the project. Parking appears to be sufficient for the proposed use. Site traffic will consist of residents and visitors using the site. One twenty four foot wide driveway serves the proposed parking area. Pedestrians are anticipated to be crossing in front of the driveway as the sidewalk is located through the driveway. Signing will be needed to alert pedestrians to traffic. Vehicle can light flare is expected to be minimized as the park will largely be used during daylight hours. The driveway layout provides access for emergency vehicles. The planning board aligns the site meets the standard overview of Citu with Zone by Law, Section Seven Seven Point Six B and C. The traffic safety, ease of access, pedestrian safety, minimizing flare and access for service and emergency vehicle. Seven, a mobile restroom trailer will be present on site. It will be connected to a new sewer line which will be built to DPW standards. The restroom trailer will be on site no more than one hundred eighty days per year and will be removed in the winter months and dorm, and during severe storms. A water line will be provided to the site. There is an existing hydrant across the street of, at the proper line of Citu Tavern. Trash receptacle, receptacles will be provided. The planning board times the site plan meets the standard review of Citu Zone by Law, Section Seven Seven Point Six D for adequacy of methods of waste disposal, adequacy of water supply and firefight facilities on site as per addition. Eight, the site plan and stormwater refer, report were viewed by the Conservation Commission's consulting engineer, Janet Pernire, the, uh, Horst, Horst Lee, the group. The plans were modified in response to the comments. Technically, post development feed discharge rate can be waged at the land is subject to coastal storm, storm flowage. However, the site has been designed to reduce the feed flow rate for total stormwater bond, leaving the site to infiltration best management practices. Feed flow rate from the ten year and one hundred year storm exceed the predevelopment conditions. However, the post development model includes collection, treatment and treatment of seventy five hundred split feet of offsite runoff from Jericho Road. The stormwater system has been designed to improve water quality by reducing total suspended solids by at least eight percent. Total sediment loading to the stormwater management system will be minimized as the park, parking lot has been designed to convey stormwater off runoff from southern proposed system via sheet flow. Pre-treatment from the on-site parking is via a sediment foray. The sediment loading from the parallel parking spaces is conveyed to the northern stormwater system. The site ratings are designed to convey stormwater to bio retention areas. The site plan meets the standard of Citu Zone by Law, Seven Seven, Section Seven Seven Point Six E and F for adequacy of stormwater handling. Nine, plant field will be brought in to build the whole after the existing building moved. Bill will be used to create land force initial interest and diaphragmatic flow to the, how would, propose stormwater management system of VPMs. VMPs, there are no existing trees on the site, so there is no need for any clarity. Emulsion control can be used for development of the site. Site plan meets the standard Citu Zone by Law, Section Seven Seven Point Six G, H and I. Ten, as the parking area contains thirteen spaces, shade trees are necessary. Multiple shade trees have been provided within ten feet of the parking area. Walkway lighting, pedestrian post lights, railing lights and ceiling lights in the shade structure are proposed. Lighting will be directed to stay on site and outdoor lighting will be low higher than sixteen feet from ground. Pedestrian access is designed to save and functional. Bike wrecks will be provided. The site plan meets the standard of Citu with Zone by Law, Section Seven Seven Point Six I and J, with the conditions provided. The site plan entitled Citu Pier Forty Four Park, Planning Board Set Date Two Twelve Twenty Twenty Five with revisions through four fifteen twenty five at Cockley Wolf, eight three plus, town of Citu Zone by Law, Section Seven Seven Point Six, site plan meets standards of a wheel, will be consistent with the reasonably decent design and proposed permitted by the regulations of the district in which the land is located.
Second for the discussion. Discussion. Do you have any discussion?
It's all pretty straightforward now. Okay, I, I. I will to approve the site plan for Pier Forty Four Park, subject to the following conditions. One, the site plan entitled Citu Pier Forty Four Park, Planning Board Set Date Two Twelve Twenty Twenty Five with revisions through four fifteen twenty twenty five by Cockley Wolf is approved, except that it may be modified with changes unnecessary to meet the issues below. Two, one set of properly scaled plans and a set of eleven by seventeen prints and PDF shall be provided to the planning board prior to prior to the reconstruction conference. Three, the shade structure shall be all current requirements of Massachusetts State Building Code. Four, materials and details of construction shall be all current requirements of DPW, support is held by the park and conservation commission, building department, commission on, and commission on disabilities. When this site plan administrative review requires approval and permitting on licensing to any local state, federal agency, such required approval permitting on licensing is deemed a condition of the town's to be planning with approval of the site name. All necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction. Five, the number of parking spaces for a municipal parking lot, parking is not specifically regulated by the table of minimum requirements, Section Seven Sixty Point Six of the Citu with Zone by Law, but is included in all other uses in this table, subject to determination of the board. The planning board determine that with thirteen onsite parking spaces, seven parallel parking spaces will be sufficient for the project. parallel parking spaces will be sufficient for the project. During construction, maintenance of the access drive, parking, and park shall be the responsibility of the applicant. A plan shall be provided prior to the reconstruction conference for operations and maintenance of the park during construction and post-construction, including but not limited to the movable restroom building, trash receptacles, maintenance of the park, pavement, lawn, and plantings, and ivy. Plan to be approved by DPW for town. Seven, signage will be installed at entrance to the parking area toward walkers and bikers to cross the traffic and indicate a full stop at the entrance. A bicycle rack shall be installed to contain a minimum of six bicycles. Location should be right to be provided to planning office prior to the reconstruction conference. Nine, trash reset will be installed out of the container mill. No pathways. Location should be provided to planning office prior to reconstruction conference. And the location of the water line shall be repositioned according to the DPW left the step of Jericho Road. Water line should be changed and improved by DPW prior to bid documents being issued. Construction. Eleven, a reconstruction conference will be required prior to the start of construction, including a representative of DPW, site contractor, town planner, and conservation and natural resource officers. Twelve, prior to scheduled reconstruction conference, a schedule of construction activities shall be given to the town planner along with stormwater pollution prevention plan and need disperated bail roll. The construction general permit and SWIP shall be provided to the town planner for reviewing and approval prior to construction and prior to final review. Thirteen, all workers in the right-of-way of Jericho Road shall be coordinated with the DPW. The DPW shall be notified prior to the start of work within the row of right-of-way of Jericho Road. Other than as required by the sword, there shall be no parking or idling vehicles on Jericho Road during construction. There shall be no infringement of any public sidewalk without a police detail or that is determined by the park. Fourteen, the applicant shall notify the town forty-eight hours before any significant equipment and material arrival to the site which may cause a safety hazard or material discretion of the public way such that a police detail is needed to ensure safe passage. Any police detail required is at the expense of the applicant. Thirteen, I mean, excuse me, fifteen, stormwater control measures shall be maintained according to the long-term pollution prevention plan and stormwater operation and maintenance plan submitted for the project. The stormwater prevention plan or SWIP, all clearing and eroding operations shall only occur while erosion, sedimentation, and pollution are in place. Sixteen, a crushed storm construction entrance shall be required required and installed prior to start of work. Water and sediment cannot be discharged into the infiltration basis and the site is fully stable office. Seventeen, prior to any land disturbance, erosion control shall be installed and inspected by the town planner or to a agent. The town planner must be notified when erosion control measures are in place, when construction begins, and when construction is completed. If deemed necessary, let the town planner in consultation with the DPW engineering staff and the conservation agent. Temporary sedimentation basis, check dams, silt socks, or noise and dust control may be required. In addition to the erosion control measures shall have a plan. All erosion control measures shall remain until the town planner and or conservation agent determines that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. Additional erosion control may be needed to be placed prior to precipitation event to prevent sediment from moving off the property. All erosion controls shall be installed for the plants and maintained in woodworking order. Eighteen, construction work shall not begin prior to seven p.m. weekday, Sunday, and shall be entered as Saturdays. And shall cease no later than seven P.M. or sunset, whichever is programmed. No construction shall take place on Sundays or our legal state of federal holidays. Construction includes island of tracts machinery. The applicant shall not allow any large construction in the on-trucks, estate, truck aisle, and public roads. Nineteen, in an effort to reuse noise levels, the applicant shall keep all equipment that emanates sound from the site or structures in proper work order through regular maintenance. When a use of town water for the project shall be coordinated with the group and approved by the apartment pop works. Use of town water will not be used irrigation of plants during establishment period. Twenty-one, construction activity shall be conducted in a workman-like manner at all times. Blowing dust or debris shall be controlled by the applicant through stabilization, letting down or other proper storage and disposal methods. Twenty-two, all earth movement, moving operations shall only occur while erosion and sedimentation measures are in place. Twenty-three, the property line shall be marked a flag in the field under the direction of a surveyor and notification given to the town planner, a minimum of three business days prior to construction. Twenty-four, all replacement and or of any connection to town sewer and water shall be performed according to the specifications and rules and regulations for the Citrus DPW. Twenty-five, tactile warning cans if needed in the public layout shall be cast iron. Twenty-six, a curb pop application shall be submitted to DPW engineering for review or approval. Twenty-seven, utility trenches within Jericho Road shall be backfilled and controlled density building. Twenty-eight, street opening permits are required for each utility connection within the public layout after finished construction. Twenty-nine, a set of ASVIL plans stamped by a registered surveyor and reviewed by the registered professional engineer who designed the system shall be submitted to planning board within thirty days of completion of the work. This plan shall include the construction conditions of the stormwater management system, utilities, rain, building, cements, and driveways. ASVIL plan must be submitted prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy, and such plans must be found in compliance with D grade credit. All grading and landscaping must be completed must be complete prior to the ASVIL supplemental. No new underground irrigation systems shall be allowed to connect to the town. Waters distribution system are in any manner used, managed, and water in accordance with policies made effective by the board's selectmen on April eighth, twenty fourteen, and reaffirmed by the city of water commissioners on May twenty-sixth, one hundred and fifteen. All irrigation systems installed by onsite sources are private suppliers at the expense of the property.
Second. All in favor? Wait a minute.
Excuse me, is this for discussion?
Okay.
Just make a motion for discussion?
Let's get it started.
Okay.
Um, the taking down, where does that fall? We're taking down a building. Where does that fall in all of this? Destruction of the building.
What? Can somebody else answer that question for us, please? My book building itself come down.
I'm asking Cory to unmute. If she has someone else she wants to speak to this, let me.
Yeah, probably Ryan can answer that.
It's the the building demolition. My understanding is in terms of project phasing is currently planned to be would be the first thing that happens in construction. So that would be part of the construction of the park would be the demolition of the building.
You know what that is?
Um, I do not.
That that the question? My concern is that, and maybe it's already in our conditions. This is gonna be a greatly huge mess taking that thing down. Yeah, I don't take two seconds to go.
Well, I wouldn't think that that you, I wouldn't think the project would commence until there's funding.
Right.
And it's all part of one project.
Right.
I mean, this is very presented to the board as a complete project. So I wouldn't think you'd take the bit the building down early because you're gonna have a big hole that has to be dealt and then wait and do the rest of the work. It all has got to be done.
I just want to make sure that when this building gets down, that it's not a mess because it's all, that's a big, big building. Huge. That's my only.
I mean, do you want to add something? I mean, what, what you want to add? Can I repeat that?
I don't know what you mean by mess, right? I mean, it's 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 gonna take them three or four weeks to demolish a building. It's not, it's not that big a job.
All right, I'll let it go.
And I.
Yeah, it's a demolition site until we clean it up, so.
Right, so we do ask for a schedule prior to reconstruction. We ask for a schedule of construction activities. And I would think that first, you know, they're gonna have to give us a full schedule.
All right.
Aren't you add demolition and construction?
All right, we can say a schedule of demolition and construction activities.
I think that's it's up to her. There's nothing underneath that. I disagree.
Was that move the?
I don't know that is that even in the C law. That connects the air buildings. I can't, that's all. I wasn't here when they did it. One established to be open.
You might want to make sure the fence is the whole side.
Well, I believe that's on the, that's on the slide. I thought it is.
Yes.
If they have to do it for construction safety, then they have to do it. We don't necessarily condition all that, all that.
That's all on this like.
We tell them they have to comply with, you know, their, all their laws, you know, federal, state law.
Is there a second as amended?
Second as amended.
I mean, you want me to add a condition that everything must comply with federal and state, construction must comply with federal and state law. That's on there. I mean, I think it's, I think it's on. It's there.
You say that, you say that.
I'm only getting city.
Fence the back space right on however it's great to me, but it's fine in the corner of the course.
I think we've covered there very well.
I don't think we.
Yes, so second as amended.
Yeah, second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, good luck. Let us know what's going on and when you get them.
Well, I'll be very interested to hear what's happening down there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a continuing public hearing in a minute.
Oh, please. Do we need to wait till the third?
Can we take a ten-minute break right now?
Can we take a ten-minute break? Move to, um, take a ten-minute break.
Ten minutes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't think that was gonna go so fast.
Me either. Oh, no. When I take another break. Is anybody else coming?
Are you guys, we know you're stuck.
We are it. Well, yeah. I don't know if Doug's come or not. I told him pretty early.
Well, if I was me, I could not.
Probably not yours.
Did you bring any of the animals to my tour on the ark? Did you bring the animals to my tour on the ark?
Yeah, high school or junior. I have an eye for her. Yeah, all the time. So we're here, fourteen. Uh, what?
I'm sorry, did you break?
Hi. Most of them have been in the bar. Second.
If there are seconds, I'll add a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so last time we went through the findings of that except for nineteen and twenty-nine. So the board needs to go to nineteen and twenty-nine tonight. I have made the changes that you made in the findings of fact last week, and I have made changes in the conditions, but we did not do the finding of fact nineteen and twenty-nine. Everything else you are of the findings of fact, you are in both.
So I shall read nineteen.
Yeah.
Good. We are reading the, um.
Yes, I sent it to you.
Right.
A little bit of micro.
Electron.
Electron.
Okay, I am reading findings of fact for three forty in a row. We've already gone through most of them except for nineteen and twenty-nine. So I'm reading number nineteen. Sustainable site design is required in the VCN district for section seven fifty-one of Zone by law, such that stormwater management shall conform best management practices as described in the commonwealth of Massachusetts. Stormwater management handbook. For the project, the predevelopment hydrology is maintained by infiltrating stormwater in underground chambers. The project's post-construction stormwater peak rate and volume of runoff is not exceeded from predevelopment flows with a one, two, ten, or one hundred a year twenty-four hour rain events using northeast regional climate and center rain depth. Stormwater best management practices are required, and the project meets those best practices through the use of deep sump, hooded catch bases, and roof downsides to cultech very good dry well chambers. The total impermeable area of the site is thirty-five thousand four hundred square feet, and the total disturbance is seventy thousand square feet out of the seven three thousand one hundred eighty one square feet of the site. Eighty percent TSS removal has been provided with an interior roof drain handling of twenty-five hundred square feet of the flat roof and direct directing it to the D M H dash one adequate recharge has been provided.
Are we being recorded here at all?
Yes, we are. Except recording, so that's okay. All right, and then twenty-nine. Section section seven seventy-six feet. Home E, site plan and bill will standard be adequacy of surface and stormwater drainage and snow run-off within and from the site, including but not limited to all walkways, driveways, buildings, parking and local areas, finding. The proposed stormwater management system for the project consists of three subsurface recharge systems for the proposed building, parking areas, and driveway. Snow storage area is provided with several locations in the parking lot. The board engaged Chesney Consulting Services LLC to evaluate the adequacy and accuracy of Morse Engineering Company's stormwater report and data, as well as the efficacy of the design. Chesney submitted detailed written comments to the planning board. In response to these comments, the applicant and Morse Engineering Inc. provided responses, revised reports, where requested, and updated the site plans. After further review by Chesney and the applicant was determined to have adequately addressed the comments and recommendations, assuming stormwater management system is built as designed with an interior roof drain handling twenty-five hundred with the flat roof directing it to D M H dash one. Stormwater standards have been met and ensure that rates and volume of the runoff leaving the site has been decreased while increasing treatment levels. The applicant has submitted a construction phase and post-construction phase stormwater management plan and operation and management form that ensures that the project will be managed appropriately for the entire construction period and thereafter during farm work operations. The applicant has submitted an erosion control plan that has been reviewed by the board's peer reviewed consultant. The board named acceptable acceptable with the conditions provided. The applicant provided a snow storage area and will be responsible for removing snow from the property and dispose of it in accordance with state and local regulations. The review of the stormwater management system by the planning boards and developing clear and their approval of the site plan eliminates the requirement for separate stormwater permit under the stormwater general by law and its regulations for any work that conforms to plans. Gregory J. Morse P. has certified that the drainage system will result in post-development runoff characteristics, including peak flow, total volume of runoff, and water quality runoff to be equal or less than pre-development runoff characteristics. This standard is is met. But we've done everything else. So, do we need second? Yeah. All in favor? Um, now we're gonna move on to the decision. Okay, each could go on forever. Would you like to put it up? We'll see.
No.
But.
Did you already meet?
No, we're not.
Can we continue this decision?
That next time.
No, they still define the findings of the fact and testimony provided by the public hearing. Vote aye. Um, the planning board approves the stormwater permit and site plan review in the Village Center and Nantucket District three forty Gennett Road site with the following conditions, general requirements. One, all construction work shall be done in accordance with one of the plans submitted by Morse Engineering Company Inc. entitled Site Plan Proposed Long Family Building, three forty Gennett Road, accessory parcel thirteen dash two dash forty-one S two N S, consisting of twelve sheets dated ten, nine, twenty twenty-four, with revisions through four sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Two, plans by Axxing Architects consisting of colored rendering of the building, a revue color and color rendering of the building, and a street view of Gennett Road color rendering. Building elevations date two dash eleven twenty twenty-five, sheet A two oh two, step-back sections version two, dated two eleven twenty-five, sheet A two oh three, and step, step-back section version three, dated two eleven twenty-five. Multi-family building, three forty Gennett Road, permanent drawings, consisting of A one oh one ground floor plan, A one oh two second floor plan, A one oh three third floor plan, A one oh four fourth floor plan, A one oh five blue plan, A two oh one building elevations, A two oh two building elevations, A two oh three step-back sections dated ten, ten, twenty-four. Three, stormwater report and calculations, three forty Gennett Road constituent mass dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five by Weston and Sampson. Five, lighting plan for three forty Gennett Road by LSI dated ten, three, twenty twenty-four. Six, stand-alone construction-based operation and maintenance plan and post-construction operation and maintenance plan for three forty Gennett Road dated October three, twenty twenty-four, with revisions through February fifth, twenty twenty-five. Seven, response to Chesney peer review dated February fifth, twenty twenty-five, with revisions through four eighteen, twenty twenty-five, and an email dated five fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Eight, transportation impact assessment for post-residential development. We, three forty.
Fifteen.
It's fifteen. Three. Um, Gennett Road constituent mass by Vaness and Associates dated November twenty twenty-four. Traffic engineer peer review by T. and Vaughn dated January nine, twenty twenty-five. Vaness' response to January nine, twenty twenty-five. Letter from Ty and Vaughn dated February fifth, twenty twenty-five. Ty and Vaughn follow-up traffic engineer peer review dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Nine, application for the site plan review application and letter from Morse Engineering Company dated October ninth, twenty twenty-four, with revisions through February fifth, twenty twenty-five. Ten, three forty Gennett Road constituent mass landscape permit submission set dated ten, four, twenty twenty-four, with revisions through two, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Eleven, DRC recommendations dated five, March five, point five. Final building elevations must be approved by the town planner prior to issuance of a building permit of performance to submitted material. A copy of the approved plan and conditions must be kept onsite and all that during construction. Two, where this stormwater permit and site plan review requires approval permitting or licensing from a local state or federal agency, such, such required approval permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of the town situated planning board. The planning board or the board approval of the site plan review and stormwater permit, including but not limited to approval of the board by the select board in the Department of Public Works, DPW, with all public rights and rights, including Gennett Road. Construction shall meet all applicable federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and some regulatory guidance, including but not limited to those of situ DPW by the Department of Building Department, Board of Health, Planning Board, as well as the Massachusetts D E P and State Building Board. All necessary requirements and approvals must be received prior to construction. Three, construction shall meet all requirements of the constituents under bylaw. Four, the applicant shall meet the current app, shall meet the current applicant and all successors in interest shall meet the current applicant and all successors. This site plan review and stormwater permit shall last within two years'期限s, which shall not include such time required to pursue other way the determination of appeal under General Laws Chapter forty-eight, Section seventeen, where the grant thereof, therefore, in a substantial use thereof is not so recommenced except the cause or in the case of a special purpose construction if construction has not been done by such date, except in the course. The planning board may extend said period for the cause shown upon written request from an applicant prior to expiration of said period, which request shall provide a detailed description with cause necessitated and essential. A public hearing may be required. Five, the total number of residential dwell units on the site shall not exceed twenty-five. There will be three, three bedroom units, and there will be eight, two bedroom units, and there will be fourteen, one bedroom units. Two of the twenty-five units will be the four units, which is the required ten percent. The total number of bedrooms on site shall not exceed thirty-nine. A bedroom is defined in accordance with Title V of the Senate, State Sanitary Code, Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, M A A V, requirements must be met. All units constructed, constructed at the site shall be under rental or ownership conditions with ownership currently anticipated. A mix of two shall not occur. Six, the applicant shall obtain the plan endorsement from the planning board for site plan review and storm, stormwater permit in ninety days of expiration of the appeal period and this decision to be final. All conditions shall be inscribed on the plans prior to endorsement. Seven, storage of fertilizers and pesticides is not allowed unless they are covered or contained. Eight, no vehicle washing is to occur outside. Nine, the units in your new building shall be numbered outside and on a map in the building lobby for identification, by protection, and emergency response purposes. Ten, gates are not allowed at the access driveway now or in the future. Eleven. The crosswalk across the new entrance shall be ten feet wide and must comply to have standards, ADA standards, and M U T C D standards waivers. Twelve, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty-four point four and seven fifty-four point five in zoning bylaws and allow the long-term agent and other affordable affordability requirements for the affordable units to be submitted after approval of a private application for the first occupancy permit. The board grants this waiver. Thirteen, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty point five A D to allow a portion of the proposed building, namely the doors on the front facing roof area, want to perform to the building step-back, set-back requirements as set forth in the zoning bylaws. The total non-conformant area is two hundred sixty-three, three square feet out of a core area of thirty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-nine square feet. The non-conformant area equates to approximately point seven percent of the non-conformant wall area. The site review committee recommends this waiver. The board grants this waiver. Fourteen, a waiver is requested from section seven fifty point five three D to allow built-to-zone occupancy, built-to-zone of forty-two point eight percent, and the requirement is fifty percent minimum. This waiver is requested to allow adequate distance from Gennett Road to allow ADA access to the front entrance, which is forced to be elevated given the steep topography of the site, while, while still providing articulation within the building architecture and compliance with the front yard and furthest landscaping and site justice requirements. The board grants this waiver. Fifteen, a waiver is requested for the situated stormwater bylaw section. A eight point eight point three. This section of the bylaw requires the site to retain one inch of stormwater runoff for all of the purpose services. The applicant has provided one inch of treatment water quality requirement and just retain runoff in full compliance with the state stormwater regulations and maintain it is not feasible to comply fully with the one inch requirement specifically of one front portion of the site. They have attempted compliance by achieving eighty percent TSS removal and then twenty-five hundred square feet of flat roof is directed to an interior roof drain which is directed to the DMH one. The board grants this waiver. So utilities, uh, we're getting, we're trying to pick up. Utilities, parking, traffic, and street, three, sixteen, inconsiderate care of the driveway and parking areas, stormwater management system, site utilities, snowing, and lighting and landscaping shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Seventeen, all parking is limited to designated spaces as shown on the phone. Thirty-seven, surface parking spaces, including two handicap accessible spaces, are provided. Three electric vehicle, EV charging station parking spaces are shown on the phone. All parking is limited to spaces shown on the phone. Eighteen, no underground irrigation systems are allowed to infect a situated water distribution system or in any manner of use, use municipal water in accordance with the policy made effective by the board's selectmen, selectboards on October eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and reaffirmed by situated water commission commissioners on May twenty-six, two thousand and fifteen. All irrigation systems installed in accordance with the policy must be supplied by onsite sources on private water supply suppliers at the expense of the property owner. Nineteen, the application shall allow members and town officials of the planning board and other persons to have the authority of the planning board as its agents to enter upon any lands and carry out such surveys and inspections as may deemed necessary, place and maintain monuments and mounds. The applicant shall create sheet, the applicant shall cooperate with the planning board and town officials and insist them in their efforts to verify that the layout, design, and construction work in site plan and use funds are satisfactory and informed through the town specifications that they require on the planning board. Twenty, independent inspectors contracted or employed through the town shall perform the required, required construction inspections according to section nine point zero of the subdivision regulations and as otherwise defined herein. All required inspections shall take place and be inspected by the inspector, including water, sanitary, sewage facilities, and the driveway and parking areas. The inspectors shall be approved by the town planner and shall work under the direction of the town planner. Post-lease inspections shall be paid by the applicant. Written record, reports will be submitted to the applicant and the planning board in kind and manner stating, stating results of any and all required inspections during the construction unless more frequent reports are needed. Forty, our minimum advance notices required for home inspections. All stormwater recharge structures require inspection of the bottom of the excavation by the consulting engineer slash independent inspector. Noise dust and air quality control shall be in accordance with D E P regulations. Twenty-one, instruction of the proposed driveway parking area, proposed drainage, drainage systems, proposed water systems, and proposed sewer systems shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer. Said supervising engineer shall certify writing to the planning board and EDPW at completion that the proposed driveway parking areas, drainage systems, water systems, and sewer systems are constructions and are constructed in accordance with the approved plan and said systems are functioning and full accordance will be approved design. The certification of the proposed driveway parking areas and utility shall be accompanied by as-built plans signed and stamped by a professional land surveyor and the supervising registered professional engineer. Prior to issuance of an, of an occupancy permit for the building, a registered professional engineer shall inspect the exterior of the building as necessary and certify to the planning board and the building commissioner with his signature and stamp on it and as-built on it that the grading and stormwater management systems performed to that's shown on the site plan review of stormwater permit plans and are functioning in accordance with design requirements and as irrigation and grade is immaterial and is not material or altered performance of stormwater systems. The site development as-built, including building structures, gravity, railways, water, sewer gas, cable fiber optic, electrical, and storm drainage infrastructure freely submitted to auto CAD format two thousand and thirteen or higher or E R, E S R I interchange format registered to Massachusetts State Plan Committee for Divestment North America, beginning of nineteen eighty-three, compatible with the town system along with stamp and sign copies of several plants. Twenty-two, all material for utility construction shall be DPW instructions submitted. Twenty-three, street opening permit shall be obtained for each individual utility connection with a plea and a bond required for the permit application. Twenty-four.
Ooh, excavator.
Extravagant, thank you. Shall be required for any excavation in Gannett Road. Gas, water connect, gas, water connections and around any drainage structures placed in Gannett Road R O W for the loyalists. Twenty-five, a curb permit shall be obtained from the DPW prior to the pre-construction conference. Twenty-six, ADA compliant ramps, ramps shall be constructed at Gannett Road. At the proposed driveway, said ramp shall meet town standards and shall be in compliance with the site plan. Cast iron tactical pads shall be used for detectable warning strips in the town roadway. Granite curbs shall be installed along the whole length of the, of both entrances, of both entrance radius curves. Brush granite curbs shall be used at the bottom of the ramps where they may to this concrete pavement. Twenty-seven, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approval for the town, for the use of the town water prior to scheduling the pre-construction progress in any construction commencing. Any rights, any required upgrade, modification, or connection shall be at the applicant's expense. Installation of all water mains for every total shall be. Shall be performed according to the specification at the DPW water divisions. Properties of all necessary approval shall be furnished to the town planner by the applicant. Twenty-eight, a determination of adequacy of the existing water, surface, slash fire flow for the proposed use shall be provided by the applicant to the DPW town planner or the approval prior to scheduling the pre-construction conference. Prior to endorsement, the plans must be revised as soon as possible. All water components must meet the town situated water specification, the hydra, hydra specification. Newer hydrants to be used. Inspections require, required for all components. All ductile iron fittings shall be installed with the strained metal joints rather than brush blocks. What?
Mechanical.
Mechanical, what is? Sorry, mechanical joints rather than brush, brush, see, brush blocks. All ductile iron water links, not just fitting, shall be installed with polythymel erosion protective wrap. Second, that's.
Oh, yes, that's fine.
That's cool. Okay, okay. The existing. The two water service to the site shall be abandoned at the existing twelve-inch ductile anchor water main closing and capping the, the corporation stop. That's straight. Is that right? Fire flow conditions shall be calculated for Weston, Weston and Sampson. Fire flow conditions shall be calculated for western, western and southern report. Flow tests and building type calculation shall be formed to ensure proper fire protection to the premises. All units shall be individually metered in a common utility row. No master meters are allowed. Buildings without an active meter apparently need to pay a fourteen thousand water connection fee and five thousand five hundred for each five eight unit meter.
Hey, I'll pick it up. I'll go, because I can't now pick it up. Twenty-nine, a dry sewer connection pipe shall be installed onsite in the event sewer is available in the future. The sewer line shall address the following. A, all sewer mains and structures to be designed and constructed using T R sixteen guidelines for sanitary sewers and wastewater collection. B, the privately constructed sewer infrastructure will be owned and shall be maintained at all times by the applicant. The sewer line from the property line is in is owned by the applicant. C, six-inch tubo pipe fitting shall be limited to maximum twenty-two degrees and will change with a minimum of three feet. Demand hole structures must be fitted with gas, flooded, water-type bolt-down covers for approved people. E, all structures and mains to hear pressure and vacuum tested. F, owner responsible for ensuring pipes and structures installed and maintained onsite remain free from enclosed and infiltration. G, location, elevation, and type of potential future sewer in the road to be deterred. The town makes no guarantee that sewer will be available, not in the town guarantee that the depth or type of collection pipe might exist in the future. H, applicant shall provide as-built plan to the sewer division once constructed. I, all sewer work shall be done by a regular licensed school town official. J, all sewer line construction must be D P W standards and rules and regulations. Thirty, the building, parking walkways, and required sign shall be all applicable requirements of ADA, M A A B, and city administration on these buildings. Thirty-one, the applicant shall ensure that signs, landscaping, and other features located through the site triangle areas of the project site, driveways, and the intersection of Gianna Road are designed, installed, and maintained shows not to exceed lines of sight, not to exceed two point five feet in height. Thirty-two, all signs and pavement markers to be installed shall conform the applicable specifications of the manual on uniform traffic control devices. All pavement markings in the public way shall be thermoplastic. The entrance drive walk shall be painted with thermoplastic paint. Thirty-three, the applicant shall ensure that snow wind ropes located within the site triangle areas of the project site driveway intersection with the theater road that exceed two point five feet in height, although otherwise inhibited sight lines are promptly removed. Thirty-four, a snow storage areas will be designated onsite. The applicant shall ensure all maintenance personnel are performed of snow storage locations. When onsite capacity is exceeded, an offsite location shall be used in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws. Snow will be removed from the premises if parking is not available as referenced. The icing and standing agents can only be stored onsite if they are covered or contained. Thirty-five, trash management will be handled with residents responsible for bringing in trash to one dumpster location which will have a concrete dumpster pad and fence enclosure. Trash removal shall occur as often as needed so debris is not placed outside covered fence dumpster, but at least on a weekly basis. Thirty-six, all electrical, telephone, cable, and similar utility shall be located underground. Thirty-seven, except for the town-owned segments of sewer and water line from the property line outward, all utilities including but not limited to the stormwater drainage shall be maintained by the applicant according to the post-construction based operation and maintenance plan, long-term pollution prevention plan dated October third, two thousand and twenty-four, with revisions through February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five by Morse Engineering Company, Inc., and which is attached to this decision. The post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to all property owners and property manager people. Thirty-eight, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and and condition or stormwater is observed going to abiding properties up to the street, stormwater authority can require all necessary mitigation to permanently remedy the situation. This condition applies to all construction activities and survives the issuance of a certificate of completion to apply during on during all ongoing operations on the building site. Thirty-nine, no separate stormwater permit is required as long as the site is built according to according to the approved plans and stormwater calculations. This approval and conditions constitute the stormwater permit. For inspection of all infiltration infiltration systems must be performed by the planning board's consulting engineer and the design engineer prior to any backfill or system component installation to conform suitability of the soils. Forty-one, soil conditions at the bottom of the posted compression area shall be inspected by the past consulting engineer prior to infiltration devices installed at that. Forty-two, the project is proposed a discharge of stormwater that will convey off runoff into the existing stormwater system at the theater road at the site driveway. Prior to stormwater entering the municipal system, target separators are located upstream to treat the flows entering the underground stormwater system. All connections to the existing stormwater system must be through a manhole connection. Any and all work performed within theater road shall have a one-year warranty of settlement or payment restoration. Forty-three, all work located in the public way shall be four new forty-eight business hours before the works form and backfilling. Curving sidewalk construction and backfilling public way. Affordability, forty-four, all four new units shall meet requirements for inclusion in subsidized housing inventory through the state's lip or other similar state program in effect. Forty-four, forty-five, according to section seventy-four of the Zone BYL, the projects we seeking site plan view want less than fifty percent, ten percent, a thousand units. Construction shall be affordable housing. Two affordable units acquired for twenty-five unit project. The units shall be distributed throughout the proposed housing units. There is a one bedroom unit on second floor and one three bedroom unit on the third floor. All of these four new units are reserved for tenants with incomes at or below eighty percent of very leading income. Forty-six, the affordable units should be constructed simultaneously with the market regulations. No certificate of occupancy will be issued for any residential dwelling unit without the affordable units ready for occupancy. Forty-seven, applicant shall be responsible for preparing for preparation of a lip local action via this application to be submitted to the executive office of housing and living communities by the municipality chief and the official. Assistance will be available to the office. What, Matt, what if you have three, please?
Sure, a erosion control.
Yep.
Forty-eight, an erosion control plan with a sequence of construction had been applied prior to application for the building permit pre-construction conference. Detailed sequence of construction shall be provided including excess parking and parking provisions and a detailed sequence of erosion and sediment control, de-watering methodology, so all de-watering stays onsite throughout construction. The project requires a script and the project should not commence prior to review and approval of the script by the town prior to final D P A. Forty-nine, stockpiles shall be located as shown on the plans and must be protected with erosion controls including but not limited to silks, socks, and leather seating. Fifty, there shall be full unimpeded access for the fire truck and ambulance during construction. Fifty-one, the construction phase operation and maintenance plan best management practices shall be adhered to and added to the full fire truck work environmental conditions, noise, and dust. Fifty-two, site noise level shall be informed to the mass D U P's division of air quality control known policy baseline condition shall be taken and submitted to the town planner prior to the commencement of any construction activities. Fifty-three, the applicant shall follow all regulations under the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Three-ten C M R seven dot zero zero, air pollution control, seven dot zero one, general regulations to prevent air pollution, and three-one-zero C M R seven point zero nine, U, dust, odor, construction, demolition. For three-one-zero C M R seven dot zero nine U, dust, odor, construction, and demolition water must be used to prevent excessive emission of particulate matter throughout the construction project. Fifty-four, the applicant shall not operate any concrete project machinery at the quadrup let. Fifty-five, the dust control plan must be provided to the planning board for review and approval prior to pre-construction conference. Landscaping, site amenities, and public ground improvements. Fifty-six, all changes to the proposed plans must be presented to the town planner for approval. Town planner on the planning boards or the planning board's inspector have the authority to approve minor changes or modifications from the approved plans and/or any details needed providing signage, paving materials, fencing, or landscape. All other changes shall be approved by the planning board. Material selection shall be provided to the town planner for review and compliance with approved plans prior to installation. Fifty-seven, a separate sign permit shall be required from the building department for any freestanding signs unless otherwise exempted under the zoning bylaws. Signs shall be equally located on the applicant's property which will not block sightlines for traffic entry egress from the site. Any sign must be reviewed by the design review committee prior to permitting. Fifty-eight, all proposed lawns and swale areas shall have a minimum of six inches of clean stream lawn. Bill of lading shall be provided to the top planner during construction to show that the lawn is clean. Fifty-nine, there shall be no lighting still over to abiding properties, lighting fixtures that shall be cut off down lighting style. All fixtures shall be L E D and no higher than fifteen feet. Lighting fixture details and specifications shall be provided with plans prior to endorsement. Sixty, all walls over four K I must be designed by a structural engineer and meet building code. Possible with two parallel retaining walls shall be minimized but feasible. Sixty-one, the street treaty shall be a minimum of three-inch caliber, ten feet high, or branching height above sixty. Sixty-two, the existing lawn strip for the project shall not be spread back on the site if it contains invasive species I do not. Sixty-three, up to six additional ring giant or provides shall be provided if headlight wear proves to be an issue coming up the driveway to the parking lot. Sixty-five, the applicant is agreed to contribute a sum of five thousand dollars to be held in a gift account upon pedestrian traffic improvements slash studies in the north city area approved by the planning board. The applicant shall provide such funds as a gift to the town given on terms to be reviewed and approved by the town planner in advance prior to the commencement of construction. Sixty-five, the applicant shall construct a sidewalk in the tunnel right of way of theater road to town standards. The walkway shall extend along the entire frontage of the property except where there is a driveway and be five and a half feet wide, ADA compliant, concrete walkway with vertical granite curving and with a cover crosswalk across theater road similar to others in the north city area. Accessible ramps required on both sides of the crosswalk and across the street, so they will be on both sides of theater road. Sidewalk requires inspections and notifications to go with the town planner and D P W engineer. Sidewalk must be constructed to D P W engineering standards. All details must have written except D P W prior to installation. Location of the crosswalk and accessible ramps shall be approved in the field of D P W engineering to town planner and applicant. As time detectable warning panels shall be used at the right of way of the road. Architecture slash design. Sixty-six, the building shall be constructed in accordance with the architectural evaluations, elevations, and plans submitted to the project. The quality of materials, construction, and color shall not shall not substantially deviate from those as shown on the elevations and discussed during the public hearing without the review and approval of the planning board. Sixty-seven, the final building plans stamped by a registered architect who provided a planning apartment prior to a building permit being issued for review for consistency with the elevations and rendering described in the question one. If the plans differ from the approved plans, approval of the changes by the planning board will be required. Sixty-eight, low reflectivity glass is required for the building because it faces the street. Sixty-nine, any privacy fencing onsite is required with six feet tall. Seven, calculations for better capacity, downsight sizing, interior roof trans and pipe sizing shall be submitted and approved by the consulting engineer prior to issuance of the building permit. Seventy-one, a certificate a certification shall be provided to the town planner by the architect prior to obtaining a certificate of occupancy that the buildings are constructed, that the buildings have constructed, and are in substantial compliance with the approved plans. This requirement is in addition to what is required for the building.
Maureen, you want to pick it up that required prior?
Sure, required prior to scheduling of pre-construction conference as seven to two, as the units are condominium units homeowners association master T shall provide for review to include A, statement that driveway parking areas drainage systems, sewer, landscaping, and medical spaces, and other common areas shall be owned by the applicant and shall be maintained by the applicant, shall not be responsibility of the town to maintain. The driveway drainage system, landscaping, plants, stormwater drainage system, and other common areas shall be inspected, maintained, and repaired by the applicant, and shall also be stated in the note added to the plans prior to endorsement. B, a requirement that, one, maintenance of the drainage system, parking driveways, landscaping, shall be in accordance with the post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan approved by the planning board's consulting engineer. Two, provisions for snow removal and maintenance of safe conditions through the winter while all vehicle and pedestrian ways have been provided and three, description of required annual maintenance of the driveway, parking areas, landscape, lighting, and other common amenities. C, a table of the number and general location of parking spaces assigned to each unit. Seventy-three, prior to scheduled pre-construction conference, the applicant shall provide to the planning board A, copies of the reported site plan review and stormwater permanent plans, B, a check that covered the cost of inspection by the town's consulting engineer. He shall include at a minimum inspections of subdivision rules and regulations section nine point zero for the driveway parking areas, walks, and stormwater management systems, water system, municipal sewage connection, and sanitary sewage line, and new curving and erosion and dust control measures, as well as any specific requirements contained herein which may require review and inspections by the town. This specific amount shall be provided out of the planning department based on the consulting engineer's estimate shall be subject to amendment from time to time and shall be supplemented by the applicant as requested by the planning department. C, a construction schedule including approximate dates for installation of erosion control and other site protection stabilization, construction of the building, and all applicable items in subdivision rules and regulations section nine point oh, and D, a type and amount of security, cash, or performance bond provided by the applicant reasonably satisfactory to the planning board to cover the satisfactory completion of site. An infrastructure feature shown on the site plan including landscaping, parking, utilities, drainage signs, lighting, and related conditions imposed by the board. The amount shall be based on the applicant's contractor's estimate of possibly these items reviewed by the town's consulting engineer and shall be approved by the planning board prior to pre-construction contracts. C, direct contact data from the site contractor, general contractor, and twenty-four-hour member for responsive party in the event of an emergency. F, the E P A S S W P P shall be provided to the town for review and approval prior to submission to the E P A. At least a week review time is required.
I'll pick up. Get this finished. Everybody can reach out and know. Seventy-four, within two calendar weeks prior to the applicant's notification with the town planner that it intends to commence any work on the project site, a pre-construction conference shall be held with applicant and representatives, their engineers, site contractors, the town planner, town engineer, and other D P W representatives as necessary. The police department, the planning board's consulting engineer, other representatives of the town as the board physically necessary. All contractor contacts, including names and telephone numbers, shall be provided to the planning board. D P W, the police department, at least one telephone contact shall be available twenty-four hours per day in the event of an emergency. Seventy-five, the property lines of the subject property shall be marked off lay in the field under the direction of a licensed surveyor, a notification given to the town planner and consulting engineer a minimum of three business days prior to start of construction. The property lines shall be stated up in at all times during construction. Seventy-six, a stabilized construction entrance and steel fence slash saw must be installed prior to any earth disturbing activities onsite, including but not limited to clearing and revving. Constructed construction fencing shall be required as necessary to comply with state, federal, and local laws. Required during construction. Seventy-seven, construction. Seventy-seven, construction work shall not begin prior to seven A M. weekdays and eight A M. on Saturday and shall cease no later than seven P M. or dusk, whichever is early. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legally state or federal holidays. Seventy-eight, the board reserves for guidance required consulting engineer to visit the site weekly or as often as necessary during construction to observe every form of matters within the scope of the planning board's authority. Seventy-nine, all nerd, all earth moving disturbance operations shall occur, only occur while erosion and sedimentation control measures are in place and included by the town planner or town's consulting engineer. Such control measures shall remain in place until the board's consulting engineer determines after consultation with the town planner that the danger of erosion or sedimentation no longer exists. It is the applicant's affirmation. Affirmative responsibility to always ensure the maintenance and management of all stormwater control measures during construction to ensure there are no increases in stormwater flow velocity or volume to abutting properties at any time. Eight, construction activities on site should conform to the town's city general bylaws. Eighty-one, no sediment including sil- silting water shall be allowed to be in the site during construction. Eight, no parking or unloading of the road shall be permitted during construction unless approved in advance and controlled at the same time with the police department. Construction vehicles shall use the designated construction access on site. Eighty-three, all construction parking shall be on-site unless otherwise approved by the planning board. Eighty-four, the applicant shall notify the city police department forty-eight hours in advance of any significant equipment and construction material arrival to the site which may cause a safety hazard or material disruption of the public way is such that a police detail is necessary to ensure safe passage. Any police detail requires at the expense of applicant and required by the police department determines it's necessary. Eighty-five, the applicant shall not allow any branch construction equipment, our trucks to stage our idle on public roads and shall not allow such equipment, our trucks to idle on-site prior to seven A M. on weekdays or eight A M. on Saturday. Police details may be required for construction access or work within the layout of the road. Eighty-six, the applicant shall provide account with the new construction traffic will use to reach the project site if in the town's determination any identified move will create a safety hazard or material disruption of the public way that would stage to be detailed shall be contained by the applicant as an expense. Eighty-seven, eighty-seven, construction activity shall be conducted in a working light manner at all times. Loan, dust or debris shall be controlled by the applicant through stabilization, letting down and other proper storage. Those methods. Eighty-eight, no use of hydrants on-site or adjacent roads off-site is allowed for construction use. Hydrant may be available at the water treatment plant, but construction during non-water ban times. Eighty-nine, in an effort to reduce noise levels, the applicant shall be all equipment that emanates sounds from structures on site in problem with the order through regular maintenance. Now, blasting if necessary should be deducted according to all necessary permits and the all of the requirements of the city, the building department. Ninety-one. Blasting if necessary. Okay, ninety-one, snow removed, snow cannot be stored up, subsurface water or bleached areas. This condition survives perpetuity. Ninety-two, no de-watering of water shall be inside given maintenance totally on site. Required prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Ninety-three, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the planning board, building commissioner are satisfied with the building, driveway, parking areas, sidewalk or the right-of-way with crosswalk and installation of necessary utilities is in full compliance with approved plans and the site plan review and stormwater permit. Ninety-four, prior to completion of a certificate of occupancy, a copy of the contract for inspections and maintenance of the stormwater system early operation and maintenance plan shall be provided to the planning office. Ninety-five, the applicant has provided the planning board with fond of Indian trust documents submitted by Master D and declaration of trust. These documents shall be submitted for final approval prior to a certificate of occupancy being filed for. The master D shall reflect that once built, evidence cannot be reconfigured to gain additional leverage. Master D and condominium declaration of trust, master D holding any occupancy permits prior to any occupancy permit issued. Ninety-six, prior to the plan for occupancy permit, applicant shall provide A, a copy of an executing regulatory agreement to the developer, municipality and E O H L C to which you want charter for revenue being the post-rental price of the before. C, draft deed restriction to restrict the subsequent price of the ownership deals. D, applicable ownership amounts of four units at or below eighty percent of the A and I according to the E O H L C. And per two, the draft deed restriction shall be approved by town council and proof of reported, uh, for it provided to the town, to the plan and planning board prior to the issuance of occupancy permit for the board of the board. D, of units, of and for and of all remaining. D, a plan showing the location of the four units for the building and planning departments. E, the name and contact information for agencies, companies or individuals who conduct marketing, hold watering and perform the monitoring. F, a draft affirmative marketing plan meeting the guidelines for approval of E O H L C. The marketing plan must further quickly provide outreach to area minority abilities to go to find out of the availability of units and must demonstrate the need for local preference as well as ensure there will be no discriminatory impacts as a result of using local preference criteria. If the plan does not meet E O H L C requirements for inclusion of units on subsidized housing inventory revision to be required prior to an occupancy permit. Any G, any changes to the affordability documents must be approved by the town planner at the discretion. Ninety-seven, all time periods referenced in this document for completion of conditions shall be totally based and updated. Ninety-eight, the site plan review and stormwater permit shall run with the land and shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within a hundred to twelve days of expiration of the period. A such extension of that time period granted by the planning board while on approval of the permit. The applicant shall provide proof that the permit was reported to the planning board. Ninety-nine, the planning board may at its discretion with not a notification to the owner waive a modified condition of the site plan review at a duly called meeting of the board as the board determines in such a way where a modification is insignificant and is non-material and furiously effective the purpose of this decision or as otherwise warranted. One number, this site plan review and stormwater permit shall last within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use of construction is commenced prior to that time in accordance with the general laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine. One on one, all plant sheets of the site plan review and stormwater permit shall be reported at the registry of deeds. One on two, all construction work shall be done in accordance with plans. Failure to comply with any condition of this permit shall positively be invalid. One is any condition contained therein that varies from plan to perceived plan where.
The second, the schedule's second. Um, page twenty-four, remember provision fifty-six. There should, there needs to be, all changes shall be approved by the planning board. Material selection shall be provided to the town planner and a meeting with the design review committee shall be held. Because the design review committee asks for material steps, so that have, that has to go back to design review committee.
Says construction phase operation maintenance and on the current pollution permit. Is that a thing?
Yeah.
That, that whole thing?
Yeah, that's what you call her.
Is there anywhere else we just call operations maintenance?
And then number forty-five. The clean should be checked. But I, I mean, if I catch something like that or way, I just. Don't have to be careful.
One of the projects that we approved, fellow project, we asked them to have one of the affordable units come in under eighty percent, and he wanted it at sixty percent. I understand that, but an affordable unit or one bedroom affordable unit in this town is two thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but we have to go by the standards.
I just wanted to throw that out.
If the board wants to change that to sixty percent, I, I don't know that the applicant will agree.
He's not here.
We did, and he's behind us, but we did give him three bedroom unit.
Yes.
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 Well, I need to do the way. What?
I'm good with the eighty percent.
Anybody else? Second is amended. Oh, favor.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, although it took us a while, we should get a coffee, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, dear. That's sweet and great, make sure you wear your, your light jacket, your twenty-five. Got all your mask up to the mask. You're gonna need, just need it now. Oh my god, I'm so happy I don't live in Toronto, Massachusetts. Why, I feel like I'm flooded. We think we're all dead? No, I don't. Um, I will manage what's planned and, um, we want to basically have this. It's a fun sewer and it's a fun sewer in our city. Right, so, yeah, more, you know, letters I can get for support for next words. I said you, you have to get a, don't try to sample whether you can copy.
What else?
Thank you. Do we get to vote in motion?
So who?